President Rosemary Eller is going to be with us. She's, as so many of us do get trapped in Zoom calls, but she will be here momentarily. But Vice President Charlie Norris, newly reelected to the Board of Education, will step in.
Michelle.
Michelle Breen.
They brought me out of the bullpen and my arm's good.
He's stretching.
Okay, can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands by our nation and by our flag, and to the people who live and die in this home.
So before starting the meeting tonight, I was talking to the two new House administrators from the high school, for the high school, and it was really exciting. And we were having a conversation about what it is in White Plains, and it's reflected right in our mission statement. It is the mission of the White Plains City School District to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. That's what we do every day. All right. Okay. And any announcements by any Board members?
Good evening. I apologize for missing the last meeting, and so there was just one comment that I wanted to make. I was able to attend the...
Family reading?
Literacy Fair?
No. No, 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 no. Oh, the Women's Club, sorry. The Women's Club Annual Scholarship Luncheon. They do this every year, and they raise tremendous amounts of money for our seniors. And they nominate one senior to get their outstanding award each year, and I just want to thank them. I know this is an immense project. They put together a raffle, and they really, really work for our children, and I want to thank them for all of their support and for their continued, their continued support of our students and all their hard work every single year. So thank you to the White Plains Women's Club.
I wanted to mention the literacy festival that was held at Eastview. It was incredible. Over 40,000 books that were donated. It was an amazing collaboration among our teachers' union, our PTA council, and PTAs, community organizations. It was, it was such a joyful occasion, and there were so many books, and children were carrying shopping bags of books. And I'd overhear children saying, "I love reading, and I love books." It was just a really incredible occasion and so amazing that we were able to give away so many books to children.
And the weather held.
Yes.
Because it was outside.
Thank you all who made that possible.
It was outstanding. Yeah.
And I'm going to mention, last weekend in addition to that, was the Laux, Glendale Laux 54th Annual Track and Field Meet, where we had 3,509 athletes on the track setting records. Just, it was incredible. And then I really want to thank my colleagues on the Board, Joe, and all the Assistant Superintendents, for this evening. We planted a tree in my mother-in-law's honor. My mother-in-law was Joe Falcone. If you don't know who she was, she was sort of everything, and unfortunately passed January 5th from COVID pneumonia. It is not a fake thing, but we planted a tree. And thank you for all for being there. Thanks for that, Joe.
This week, I was lucky enough to be able to attend the Rochambeau Arts Festival, which I go to every year, and it was outstanding. There were so many wonderfully talented students in painting, and sculpture, and watercolor, and mixed media. It was amazing event.
We're good?
We're good.
Superintendent's report. He's good. He coaches me. It's great.
Well, thank you very much, President Pro Temp. First of all, congratulations to everybody here this evening. It is so nice to be back together, to be able to celebrate this very important night together. Now, we celebrated it the last two years virtually, and that was fantastic. But this is really great, to be able to be here together. So, and thank you to all of the family members, spouses, children, everybody who's here to celebrate. I also want to thank the WPTA, the AFT, the White Plains Youth Bureau, the City of White Plains, First Book, and CSEA, PTA, the acronyms could keep coming. But the reality is, really, what I want to thank, I want to thank the entire community, the educational community here in the White Plains City School District, and the greater education community for supporting all of our children here in White Plains. 40,000 books distributed, and the books that were not distributed, and by the way, there's a brand-new book. So Moms and Dads are coming out, and they were starting their children's home library. They were adding to library. You have anything, picture books to chapter books. And the books that we were unable to give away in that window, we were able to then share with neighboring communities who were then able to give them away to their children. So the gift of literacy is really a priceless gift, and I do want to thank all of our partners for making all of that happen. Caroline, she won't say it, but I want to thank you, Cara, personally, and all of you, right? Jen, everybody. Tremendous partnership in support of our children. Laux was also fantastic.
It was great.
To see the students again together, coming back together. Second or third largest competition in the country.
In the country.
Right? It was amazing to drive onto the field and to see other nations' flags raised below ours, or to hear other nations' national anthems at a high school event. That's something to be very proud of. Also, and we're talking about good news, last Tuesday, the budget, the bond, the Capital Reserve, and our incumbent trustees were all elected, selected, reelected by extraordinary margins, over 90%. And we want to offer, I want to offer the sincerest thanks and gratitude to our entire community for supporting our children in such an amazing way. So congratulations to all of you. It was a great day for White Plains, and will continue to be a great day for White Plains in the years to come, particularly as we move into Phase 1 of our Capital Improvement Bond project. So congrats. Dr. Carol Teich, the Finance Committee, the Audit Committee, the Board of Education, the Master Planning Committee, everybody who worked so hard on that, congratulations and thank you. Are our reps, my White Plains High School reps here this evening?
I need to lay off.
Okay.
You'll be all meetings.
No, absolutely, and they've been wonderful. I do want to recognize them, though. Thiago, Jack, Sophia, Soli, Zaida, Alex, Taren, and Riley have been absolutely outstanding liaisons this year, coming to every, just about every Board of Education meeting, virtual or otherwise, and giving us updates on happenings throughout the district. Let's give them a round of applause. Memorial Day weekend's a little bit longer this year. The White Plains City School District, remember, Thursday, Friday, and Monday.
Way to go, Dr. Rick.
Board of Education in snow days, I guess. We also have the annual parade is back in White Plains, and that'll be taking place on Monday at 10:00, I think. Starts, I think, at 10:00. COVID-19 still with us? Testing, mitigation, vaccination, all these things are available. If you're interested in participating in testing, you can do that throughout, through the district. And we're also going to be offering another vaccination clinic upcoming for boosters for our kiddos, parents and guardians who are interested as well. Code of Conduct's up for annual review. Thanks to the committee for taking a look at that. Ms. Algard and her team, and we'll see that in June. Okay. We're also going to be recognizing our retirees at the June 13 meeting in person, which we're very excited about. Just looking ahead, there's going to be a conversation for the Board, there's going to be a conversation about pulling together our ad hoc committee for the master plan to review solar. We've been looking at a plan with Bright Court and is working on that with our legal council right now, but it is a very exciting opportunity. It's the same company, of course, that worked with the city, and right now, it requires no capital outlay of part of the district. And the savings could potentially be, depending upon all things, be an equal $5 million, or around that over 25 years if all the extensions and everything are in place. So there'll be more to come on that, but that's coming up. Also, in terms of next year, we're already hard at work and planning for next year, and I know our principals have been communicating with our school communities about some really exciting things that are going to be happening. A lot of it connected to the successful budget. For instance, here at White Plains High School, we're looking, we're going to be adding a third house, and that's a, that's a very exciting prosperity as well. So that is the bulk of my superintendent's report.
Just wanted to add one thing. I don't know if that happened to you, Cheryl, but when I was running for the Board of Ed this time, I got contacted by the reporter who covers White Plains Examiner, and she covers some other local districts, and she said, essentially, "Why would you do this again?" How, Lebanon? Because every time I get the question, I tell people I'm on the Board of Ed, and someplace outside of White Plains, they say, "Oh, that's thankless." I said, "No, it's not." So I told her that we're different here in White Plains, and it's okay. It's okay to disagree. We can disagree, but when it comes to pointing north for all of our kids, and we have somebody who's getting tenure tonight, who's graduated in between my kids, and it's a real special place here in White Plains, and for those in the audience who haven't been here before, it's a real special place. And so thank you all for being here. It's really, I just had to say that.
Can I just jump right in for one more minute? We mentioned Laux, and you know, that's, that's another event that no one really realizes the magnitude and the amount of work that goes into it. Charlie might, because he's helped with it for so many years. There's a Laux Committee, and they all do their share, but, and I might be a little bit prejudiced because my son was a Laux runner, but there's one person who we cannot forget. This man truly gives an inordinate amount of his life to Laux, and he has been doing it for many, many, many years. It's our own coach, Fred Singleton, and I just... I just want to acknowledge him and thank him once again for the tremendous amount of work that he gives to Laux.
Thank you, Rosemary. Rose, not Rosemary. I'm Rosemary.
Close.
Mr. President.
I think we should...
We have, we do have an item on the agenda that's in Superintendent's report right now. I'd like to respectfully recommend that this item be included as individual action item 9F. And this is the memorandum of agreement between the White Plains City School District and the White Plains Teachers Association. I am really very proud to offer this to the Board for consideration this evening, particularly on such a special evening as we're celebrating new tenure recipients. To my colleagues who worked closely with me negotiating this successor agreement, I want to say thank you. You just mentioned that things are different in White Plains, and they truly are, because when we do things like negotiate, we don't set out to have winners and losers. What we set out to do is to create an environment where everybody's a winner and everybody's successful, and that our collective bargaining agreements, which sometimes you hear about in the news, not White Plains, but others, are sustainable, and that they're fair, and that they're equitable. This memorandum of agreement that's on the agenda for this evening is a four-year pact. It is all of the things that we mentioned. I am really proud that we're able to get these kinds of things done together in a collaborative manner. So if you would allow...
Absolutely.
We would need a motion.
A motion. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, that will allow, just for the audience, that will allow for all of the new hires on the agenda this evening that are going to be beginning, starting next academic year, to be part of this new agreement.
I have to abstain from...
And you'll have to abstain from that. So let's, you know what, let's do that now. Let's, if you don't mind, let's take the role. We'll do another motion.
Oh, no, you don't have to.
Nope. That was to put it on, and this now will be the motion, second, to approve the MOI agreement.
Motion to approve, so moved. Randy, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain. Thank you. Okay. Tenure.
Let's do it, tenure. Oh, Rosemary's not here.
Well, you know what? Let's, no, let's, you wanted to do the rest of the agenda. Wait for...
Okay. Public participation.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so what we're going to do, we're going to hold off on tenure just for a minute, because maybe Rosemary's going to get here. It's going to be good. It's going to be okay.
It's still happening.
We're not going to change our minds. Is there anyone, public participation? Oh.
Mrs. Lyons.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
My name's Cara McCormick Lyons. I'm here speaking as president of the Teachers Association at 500 North Street. I want to thank everyone for this respectful agreement. I want to welcome all of the new folks here tonight. I want to congratulate our people who I believe, I anticipate, will be appointed to tenure. Your journey has been insane. And so when it says on your little plant, "Roots planted," you have planted, they've been planted in your home on Zoom, but I really want to congratulate you for this accomplishment. It's been huge. So take this moment to kind of soak it all in and think about what you have accomplished over this time. Thank you.
Do we have any other public participation?
No?
Okay.
Some reaction?
Some reaction items. We have items four through...
Eight.
Four through eight on the agenda. Thank you, Michelle. Any questions? Is a motion so moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have individual action items, which will hold on the tenure appointments.
Okay. Oh, that's great. So now we move to individual action items. We're going to hold off on tenure. We're going to go to the adoption of the Capital, 2022 Capital Reserve Fund, which is a savings account that we are able to put money in if there's money left over in the budget. There's funds that we can use so that we then don't have to raise taxes when we do some capital projects and other things. We got voter approval to create the account. We would have to get voter approval to use the money in the account. Good? Okay, cool. All right. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have individual action items, which will hold on the tenure appointments.
Okay. Oh, that's great. So now we move to individual action items. We're going to hold off on tenure. We're going to go to the adoption of the Capital, 2022 Capital Reserve Fund, which is a savings account that we are able to put money in if there's money left over in the budget. There's funds that we can use so that we then don't have to raise taxes when we do some capital projects and other things. We got voter approval to create the account. We would have to get voter approval to use the money in the account. Good? Okay, cool. All right. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need a roll call vote on this, please.
Roll call vote. Okay.
Ms. Clark?
Okay, Mr. Norris?
Aye, yes.
Mrs. Lowridge?
Aye.
Mr. Ricky?
Aye.
Mrs. Brady?
Aye.
Dr. Stein?
Aye.
Mr. Latizia?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is C probationary appointment of administrator. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's for, where's Michael? Mr. Eaton?
I saw him.
How are you? Good. It's for appointment for Mr. Eaton to replace, not replace, but to take over the leadership for Ernie, succeed, because Ernie, Ernie's here, I saw him.
There he is.
There's Mr. Spatafore over there. Ernie was here, and then he sold bagels for a while, right, Ernie?
Yep.
Seventeen years, and then he came back. So that's, that's an interesting experience, but, but we have, Ernie, thank you for everything you've done, for all, for our community, our district. And in addition to Mr. Eaton, we have the two new House administrators who are sitting over there. Welcome. That's it. Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, no, no. I'm going back in the bullpen.
I've never seen you move so fast in the world.
Okay, so that motion carried.
Congratulations.
Yes.
I do, I do want to make mention of a couple of things. Number one, congratulations, Mr. Spatafore. We're, we're going to be celebrating Mr. Spatafore in June, along with our other retirees. Mr. Eaton has stepped in and has done a great job in working alongside Mr. Spatafore and the team at Highlands. And if you don't know, Mr. Eaton also went through a very extensive interview process initially back in the fall, when he was interim principal, and we are very happy to have you assume the position of principal at Highlands Middle School. We know that you're going to do a great job to support our children and our entire educational community, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And to our newest administrative team members, welcome. Everything that you've heard about White Plains is true and more. You are going to absolutely love this community, mostly because our children are tremendous. And we look forward to you officially joining with us, and I know the team at the high school will also be there for you, to support you, as well as all of us and all of our colleagues in the classroom as well. So congratulations to you two. So Madam President, we are, and everybody, you look up. We are on Item D, the Proclamation for Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Okay. Okay, everyone, good evening, and I'm so sorry that I was late. I just had a half-hour meeting that I had to beg to get off after 45 minutes. But all is good, and I'm happy to be here, and I apologize, and I'm just so happy to see you all, and I congratulate you all. White Plains is the place we want to be, the best place. So without further ado, next we are at the recommended approval of a proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. May we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for doing that. I think this is the fourth year that we've worked with Moms Demand Action here in Westchester County to raise awareness about gun violence.
Thank you. Our next individual action item, and I believe our last, is the recommended approval of the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association Proposed Budget and Nominating Committee slate as submitted. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're going to go back to tenure.
Oh.
We wait that we save.
We save for you.
It's the very last item.
Oh, okay.
If you can raise your hand if you are a loved one, supporter, friend, family member of somebody here this evening that's received a tenure.
Wow. Wow.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming and for supporting your teacher, but also all teachers. You know, this evening, we, we celebrate tenure. Did you ever hear some people say "tenure"? You don't know what it is? It's not "ten-year," it's "tenure," and it's very important. Anybody know when it was first founded in the United States? No, I'm only kidding, this is the last. 1910. 1910. And the reason is because in the role of professors, university-level teachers, the class judges, right, teachers are not the only people who get tenure. Anybody in those types of controversial or potentially political influence positions needed some type of protection to ensure that they were able to do their job, to fulfill their responsibilities, but at the same time, not fall prey to political whims or ideologies. That's important. 1920s, the suffrage movement, women's rights, that's when tenure became part of the K-12 system. Why? Well, because it could have had teachers who would have tried to do something like, say, wear pants. Remember, women weren't allowed to wear pants. Or get married, or start a family, or have a belief that was different than whoever was in charge of their particular institution. Now, a lot of folks talk about tenure, "Well, you know, it's something that could keep folks who are not the best performers in the classroom." And that's true. All things have unintended consequences. That can happen. In White Plains, we have an extraordinarily rigorous process to ensure that the faculty members and the administrators who are part of the team, who are in line in probationary, about to receive tenure, are absolutely the highest quality teacher or administrator. The vetting processes, Mr. Pepper, and all of our tenure recipients this evening could tell you, is extensive, and I'd like to thank you all for sticking it out and for putting all of your effort into your profession. Our classrooms are the cradle of our democracy. I'll say that again. Our classrooms are public, school classrooms all across the country are the cradle of democracy. The ideas, the conversations, the debates, the disagreements, they're all part of learning how to participate in a representative democracy. It's not just something we do, where we send kids to school, kindergarten through 12th grade. It's so that when they get finished with public school, they're ready to be part of the American experiment. It's that big. It's that big of a responsibility. It's that big of a deal. Now, there are other professions. Maybe some of you are lawyers, engineers, medical doctors, astronauts, mechanics, airplane pilots, you name it. Here's the constant, the commonality, no matter what your profession is. Every one of you, every one of them, every one of us needed excellent teachers to do what we do. So whether you're wiping noses, teaching colors, whether you're teaching calculus, every single interaction with a child, from the time that they're three to the time that they're 18 and beyond, is all in preparation for whatever it is that they aspire to be. And that's why I think that education is the best. I'm a teacher, so you know. But it is the best profession, the most rewarding profession, because every single day, you get to help. Every single day, no matter what's going on in our lives, and none of us are perfect, we're all humans, but we get to put that aside for a minute and help other people all day long. Families, kids. It is a beautiful profession, and you should all feel extraordinarily proud to be part of it. Tonight's honorees, and I'm going to read your names, ask you to stand up, and then we're going to clap for all of you, are in all different levels, in all different areas throughout the organization, and every single one of them, Mr. Pepper, Ms. Kangrow, the entire team, could tell you... the entire team, uh, could tell you that you have all shined throughout your time here in the district. And on top of it, through probably some of the most challenging times that we've ever experienced, at least in recent memory. Remember, when the Fortune 500 companies needed to worry about COVID, they just packed up their laptops, went home and opened them up on the dining room table. Teachers didn't have a playbook. How do you interact with six-year-olds virtually? How do you engage with teenagers virtually? How do you make sure that your children have books and food and clothes? How do you make sure that first responders have childcare? How do you make sure that you're able to continue on with the organization when the pandemic eases up? All of these things, these folks had to figure out. Amazing. And you did it. And for those of you who were learning, we're all learning, but for those of you who were just getting into education during the time that the pandemic broke, you've probably had some of the best trial by fire, trial by pathogen, um, that's, that, that you could, you could ask for. But you know, at the end of the day, there's always a challenge. You know, yesterday was, or today, it's COVID-19, tomorrow it could be something else. We will figure out a way. Teachers, support from their committed boards of education and their communities will figure out a way. So, Carrie Salvatiera, where are I, Carrie? Morela Ugarte Ramirez, Laura Flores Gomez, Stephanie Tuck, Stephanie Layden, Monica Aris Mendez, Rachel Bernstein, Erin Di Martino, and by the way, Erin Di Martino, where, I raided the Post Road Library for all of those Read Alouds, no, not today, during, during the pandemic. You, you and MAS, I was stealing all of your books. Guyani Harper, uh, Harper Sumeon, yeah, yeah. Claudia O'Reilly, Lauren Gwendorf, Nicole Shortino, uh, Kristy Trigser, Gina Cardi, uh, Cardillo, Paul Harrison, Alyssa Phalen, Lisa Shore, Zachary Trunkley, Amy Esther Home, I'm sorry, Esther Home? Right. Emily Faber, Brittany Feeney, Sarah, uh, Jabor, Ashley LeBlanc, Les Mirage, Marco Montegato, Montegato, okay. Melissa Mullen, Omar Sharif, Sarah Tom, Cara De Guerrero, and Jennifer Pine. Congratulations, all of you. So what gets you here tonight? Well, your administrators wrote amazing letters of recommendation for all of you, um, which you, you've, you've seen, and the Board of Education has reviewed, and I've read, um, a couple of times, actually. They were just, they're really wonderful. Uh, and what I wanted to do is just pull some quotes from these letters to give you all a sense of what we see when we see your loved one in the classroom working with children. "She has embraced the most current research about how students learn to read, and her teaching practices demonstrate the effective translation of theory into practice. You can't just stop learning when you're a teacher. You must always be learning to put the best practices in place for your children." "She ensures success of all students by taking the time to build strong partnerships with parents. She helps parents become partners in learning." "She provides insightful feedback regarding student progress, and she uses that data to establish goals for all of the students." "A true advocate for students. She has keen awareness and understanding of students' social and emotional needs. She always looks for ways to make sure her students have access to instruction, the resources needed, and included in everything they can participate in." "This teacher has not only shown competence in all capacities as a STEM enrichment teacher, but also in other professional relationships as well. She's constantly shown a drive to be a leader in the field." "She varies activities throughout lessons to ensure all students are set up for success in mastering learning objectives. Through informal and formal observations, this teacher has exhibited excellent teaching practices using technology as an integral part of lesson building and teaching." "She's a fountain of happiness." Rachel, where are you? I loved that one. Somebody said it's true, I heard. "She's been instrumental in creating new traditions like Read Across America, where students participated in Read Alouds with other students across the nation." "She's a team player, flexible, hardworking, funny, smart, and kind. A fierce advocate for children and is always seeking to do what's best for students. High level of energy and excitement marks in her classroom, and it's always buzzing with students working collaboratively in partnerships or in groups." Remember, when we were in school, it was independent work, straight lines, rows, right? Shh, 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 don't read ahead, Mike, right? Where in our classrooms today, everyone's working together collaboratively. "Provides positive focused feedback throughout her lessons. She's developed a variety of strategies to support students and help promote higher order thinking. Ridiculously smart." Where are you, Lauren? "A wealth of knowledge. An innovative educator, dedicated to students as individual learners in building relationships with parents to support students and their diverse learning needs. A self-starter and reflective practitioner. Works collaboratively with colleagues to design scaffolded lessons to support the needs of all learners in the classroom. Sees his role as a coach who facilitates student learning and not as a gatekeeper of knowledge, not as a gatekeeper of knowledge, right? "He encourages students to take agency over their learning by having them conduct error analyses and printed answer keys and solution videos. Provides instruction to both general and special education students in ways that develop academic and problem-solving skills while increasing their understanding of science. The ability to facilitate group discourse and effectively implement Socratic seminar strategies." Do you know what that is? I just did it. "Students contribute to the lesson and the learning of others. Ms. Shore provides ample wait time for students to articulate their thinking when other teachers may want to jump into rescue mode. All voices are heard, and diversity is celebrated in her classroom. A reflective teacher who evaluates his practices in light of his beliefs about learning needs for students. Has a knack for helping students find their place in the high school so they can thrive. Whether it's welcoming students into a book club or directing them to the right co-curricular activity, she helps students make meaningful connections to support them in pursuing current passions and discovering new ones, just like our mission. An advocate for all students and always makes students' needs her utmost priority. Parents often share their positive experiences after an interaction via email, phone call, or conference. She thoughtfully uses formative assessments and observation to gauge student progress as well as to inform instructional decisions." This is a quote. "I used to think that creating chemistry was by accident, but now I know it's so much more. We, the students, form these little connections. The classroom has to be safe and welcoming. When you establish the relationships, you build community. This makes the classroom safe, welcoming, and a positive place to be." It's a classroom we all want to be in. "When visiting, when visiting him in his classroom, it is amazing to see the students' enthusiasm and their appreciation for his knowledge, teaching, and assistance. He's a resource for families, and they take great pride and comfort in knowing that he's there when they have questions or need support. He works closely with, with families throughout students' high school academic career and the daunting college application process." "She's exhibited excellent teaching practices using technology as an integral part of her teaching. She combines all the essential elements of excellent art education to ensure her students are continually growing as young artists. Strong relationships. He's worked to find ways to meet the needs of both these student populations, as well as focusing extensively on remote and hybrid learning strategies for all kids." This teacher's classes can be scintillating. Ms. Tom? It's the first time I ever, Doc, is Dr. Doty here? It's the first time I ever heard scintillating. That's fantastic, I can. "Combines deep knowledge of her content with an innate sense of fun that draws students in and makes them eager to learn. Students describe the teacher as personable, funny, and caring. These are attributes that have contributed to her success in the classroom in addition to being a positive role model for students. Another reflective practitioner. Now, this teacher designs lessons that require total participation from students and that reinforce the skills necessary for a thorough understanding of musical concepts. Her teaching is indicative of the discipline, detail, patience, and perseverance required to be an excellent musician." Ladies and gentlemen, I give you this year's White Plains City School District tenure honorees. Now, it wouldn't be me if I didn't end with this. The responsibility is from this day forward. We, and I hope, God willing, you have a long career in education, decades. And every day, remember that we get to do this. None of us have to. We get to do this. We get to work with children. We get to elevate them. We get to help their families. Sometimes we make mistakes, and then we get to say we're sorry, and we get to say we're wrong. All the while, we also get to learn, and we get to be the torchbearers for our country. That's important stuff. It's heady stuff, I know, you're gonna have to reflect on it for a little while. But I also know, and because of our team and all of the work that everyone's done, I know you belong here. I know that this, tonight, is exactly where you should be sitting. And so I do hope that you spend the rest of your career with us, and I hope it's many, many, many years long. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you, uh, for that, Dr. Ricka. And with that, we have the recommended approval of the appointment to tenure of the following teachers effective August 31st, 2022, unless otherwise noted. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First, I'm just so happy, um, that this portion of our agenda was left so that I could enjoy it, um, with you all. And I thank, um, I thank my colleagues and Dr. Ricka. I thank you so much, um, for this privilege. And, and I would just like to end and say thank you for what you do every single day for every student in our school. We don't know who's gonna be the next president. We don't know who's gonna be the next person to sit on the Supreme Court. We don't know who's gonna be the next Oscar winner. We don't know who's gonna be the... Well, the next one, the next one, Charlie. You know, we don't know, but what we do know is the sky is the limit, and whatever we imagine, and whatever they imagine, together we can make that come true. So thank you. So now, we're at the moment where we thank our, our tech committee. I see John Shepherd. Thank you. Thank you to our finance, um, department and the budget passing, amazing, um, the work that goes into it, and you get to start it all tomorrow.
We already started. We started last week, last Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah, you, you get to start again, but, um... Yeah, yeah, we, you know, just want to recognize that this is like a lifelong process, like every single day. And thank you, you know, just thank you to our colleagues who make sure that we attract the, the best teachers. Um, our interview, I think, process is robust, and when you come here, you are the top of the top. So I wanted to thank, you know, HR in terms of bringing all of you here to us so that we can enjoy your skill. And also, um, for our kids that need additional support, thank you for helping our kids get the support that they need to be just as successful as anyone else. So all of these things together make us White Plains. So thank you, guys, all. And without further ado, may I have a motion to adjourn this special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I forgot.